You know, we're finding guys that are wearing vests tonight.
Well...
Including our...
Call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Don Tijama, Mont Valley Church of God pastor. Will, uh... Vice Mayor will lead us in the pledge.
Hi, everybody. Join me in prayer, please. Love and Heavenly Father, to come and acknowledge your presence, to acknowledge that you are the ruler over all things is first and foremost. We thank you, Father, for your presence that is already here because there's nowhere that we can go that we are away from your presence. And so we know that while you are here, that you're going to hear the conversations that are going on tonight. We thank you for organizations, Lord, like the Lions Club, that give plenty of volunteer time to help make our community even a brighter spot to play and live. We thank you for our police department that keeps us safe. We thank you for this council, this panel, that the citizens of this lovely town have assigned to mind the matters of business. We thank you for the great growth that you've brought to our community and what that has meant to our tax coffers and how we're able to do other projects. Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings you give us and pray your wisdom upon this panel. We thank you for the citizens that have volunteered their time to come and learn how wonderfully run this town is and the excellent people that we have serving in it. Your blessings have been showered upon us, Lord. Let us be good stewards of them, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Rick. Next item is roll call. June?
Councilmember Bruni? Here. Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Valerie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
Glad to be here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Yay, and Mayor Scoog?
Yeah, President.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item is proclamations. Will, uh, Poppy Day, that's the first one. Carm Staker here? June, you have the... Going to read the poppings, of course?
Yes. Poppy Days, May 26th and 27th, 2017. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as the symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of this memorial flower, whereas I, Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim May 26th and 27th, 2017, as Poppy Days and request all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on these days.
Vice Mayor, any comment?
Well, I just want to thank you for all that you do. It's right that we should honor those that have fallen, and I appreciate all that you do in serving in the way that you do. So, thank you very much.
Your comments, Carm?
Well, yes. One of our group is not here. The two little gals that are the... This poppy that will be giving poppies to the council have not arrived. I don't know if they've had a car problem or what, but if you'd like, we can have them come up after, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
We may begin to that, yeah.
Would that work for you?
I think that'll work.
Okay, and this is Diane McCabon, and she is in charge of the poppies that we will be distributing this next weekend.
Diane, 20 minutes. Don't say that. She'll pick you up on it.
You must... Yes. You must hear me at the Lions Club, I guess. Yes, the 26th and 27th, Friday and Saturday of this week, we will be at three of the storefronts, and that will be Ace, Safeway, and Fry's, and we'll be distributing poppies. You do not have to pay for them to receive a poppy, but we will gladly accept your donations, which we use for veterans and their families.
Thank you. I think Carm is very special to me. She was mayor when I was sworn in as council, what, about 25 years ago?
Just yesterday.
Just yesterday. Any, uh, comment, Carm?
Oh, it's been such a privilege to live here in Prescott Valley and to see how we have accomplished so many things and congratulate the council and all of the people in the community because it takes a lot of folks to make these... The things that we have accomplished happen. So, thank you so much, and as soon as our young ladies get here, why, we'll, uh, work it into the program. Here they are. Very good. You want to talk 24 minutes? I might just mention to you that the poppies that you will see us distributing this weekend are made by our veterans at the VA Medical Center here in Prescott.
Road construction in Prescott Valley.
Road construction in Prescott Valley. Thank you very, very much. This is Jordan Birch and Jada Birch, and these are our junior American Legion members. And Jordan would like to read a poem on Flanders Fields, if it's all right. In Flanders Field?
In Flanders Field, Lu...
By Lieutenant?
By Lieutenant Colonel Jo... John Mcclair, Canadian Army. In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row, that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly, scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up or...
Quarrel.
Quarrel with the foe. To you from failing hands, we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high. If we break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep through the poppies grow in Flanders Fields.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for allowing us to do this. It calls attention to Memorial Day and what the poppy stands for. It's very important. Nowadays, I don't think a lot of people even remember about our veterans and about the poppies, so thank you for allowing us to do this.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, they can. Certainly can. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, next, we have another proclamation. Relay for Life, or... Yeah, American Cancer Society. You got the, uh...
Yes, I do.
Oh, there's that, Kristy. Hey, how are you?
American Cancer Society Relay for Life, June 2nd and 3rd, 2017. Whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life movement is the world's largest fundraising event to fight cancer in every community and unites communities across the globe to celebrate people who have battled cancer, remember loved ones lost, and take action to finish the fight for all. And whereas funds raised for Relay of Life of Quad Cities Community enable the society to help people facing the disease today, educate people about how to reduce their risk for cancer or detect it early, and fundraise research that will help protect future generations. And whereas Relay for Life helped even... Help fund more than 144 million in cancer research last year. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim June 2nd and 3rd, 2017, as Relay for Life Days in the Quad Cities Community and encourage citizens to let their passion inspire them to take the Relay for Life message to more people, to raise more dollars, to fund the fight against cancer by participating in the Relay for Life event at the Town of Prescott Valley Civic Center lawns on June 2nd and 3rd, beginning at 6:00 PM.
Rick, any comment?
I'd like to hear from Kristy.
Well, this is our second year I have holding it at the Town of Prescott Valley. Last year was our first year, and it was such a beautiful venue, and we're just excited to have it here again this year, so we hope everyone comes out and supports us.
Now, Rick?
Yeah, it is a great event, and I'm sure everyone, well, that can, will certainly be here, so thank you for your hard work, Kristy.
Kristy, we appreciate what you're doing. Those trips to Washington DC and locally, keep up the good work. And this is for you. Okay, next is Leon. Lions Club Centennial. Is Marnie here? Oh, there she is. Come on in.
Absolutely.
Come on. Bring them all... Bring up whoever...
Everybody.
Come on down. This may take a while. Not everybody moves as fast as I do. June, can you read the proclamation?
Yes, I can read the proclamation. Before I read it, Mayor, I'd like to also recognize my father, Fred, who has been a member of the Lions Club for over 50 years, so... Lions Club International Centennial Celebration Day, June 7th, 2017. Whereas the Prescott Valley Lions, uh, Early Bird Lions Club is a member of the Lions Club International and the words... World's largest services organization with 1.4 members in 46,000 clubs in more than 200 countries and geographical areas. And whereas Lions Club International was founded in 1917 and is celebrating 100 years of humanitarian service. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club, established in 1984, is comprised of volunteers who dedicate their time to the betterment of our communities and aid those in need. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club serves by providing sight and hearing programs, feeding the hungry, aiding seniors and disabled, and caring for the environment, and will participate in the Lions Club International Centennial Services Challenge as part of the Lions Club International Centennial Celebration. Now therefore, I, Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2017, as Lions Club International Centennial Celebration Day and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing the exceptional continued service of the Prescott Valley Early Birds Lions Club.
Your thoughts?
Well, it's always a privilege to be able to be with the Lions and Roar.
Roar!
And we appreciate so much the opportunity of being here to receive this certificate tonight. A hundred years is a long time, but the Lions have served well during that time. And our Lions Club here in Prescott Valley serves very faithfully in a variety of different areas, sight included in that, along with a lot of other activities that they sponsor and which they participate.
Well, you're a great organization, Rick. That was the first time. That's the first time. Anyone else have any comments?
Come on, Steve. You were a charter member of this club.
Yeah, come on, I'll make your comment.
I just did.
Marnie, you have it?
I just want to say it's a pleasure to be a part of this Lions Club, and I've been... This is my 10th year as a Lion, so Roar and working with all these great people, doing the good that we do in the community is my way to give back, so thank you.
By the way, Marnie's been Chamber Executive for 10...
11 years.
11 years. Any other comments?
No.
No? Hey, that's great. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Good, well, we sure appreciate that. Thank you for your service. What a great organization. Steve, good to see you. Oh, is that right? I get around a little bit. Okay. Now I understand our Student of the Month is, uh... Couldn't... Has graduation tonight, so Mike might have some comments. Councilmember?
Yeah, I'd be happy to make some comments. Today's... Or tonight is graduation with Bradshaw Mountain High School, so... Rather than just let it go and attend one of the assemblies at Bradshaw Mountain, I thought it'd be nice to at least extend the honor during our council meetings, since they can't be here in person. And as all... As we always say, is that the Town of Prescott Valley, in conjunction with the Optimist Club of Prescott Valley and the Town of Prescott Valley Bradshaw Mountain High School, come together to recognize a Youth of the Month. And this is usually our most favorite. I think if you've asked all our council members and even the Lions, they would say this is their favorite council meeting, the fourth Thursday of every month. And we do... It is because we recognize a Youth of the Month. And we have somewhat of a special person this evening that we wanted to say hi and shout out and congratulate, and that is a gentleman who is what I call above average. And I think since Garrison Keillor has shut down his show now, I think we ought to adopt the slogan, "Welcome to Prescott Valley, where all the women are strong, all the men are good-looking, and all the children are above average." And the reason I say that is that this young man is above average, and he's a little different than what we see every month. And that's because he's indicated he's had to work very hard to get where he is today. He spent all four years, from freshman to senior, at Bradshaw Mountain High School. His name is Ulysses... Ulysses Alvarado. And he's indicated that he's learned a lot at Bradshaw Mountain High School, thanks to faculty and staff and the leadership they provided. And he's had to work, I think he said, every... All four years after school and during the summer to help him get through the high school days. And so he's very proud that he's going to be graduating. And one thing that's a little different, and that's why I say he's above average, that he's not looking forward to necessarily going to college, but going to increase his skills in terms of welding. So, he's hoping to go to a tech school to begin his welding career, which I think we all lose sight of sometimes when we recognize students in our community, especially those who are really academic-minded and goal-oriented. And Ulysses is... Ulysses is, and I can't say his first name, I don't know why, is one of those individuals who I think saw the light in a different way than some of the other students at Bradshaw Mountain High School. But nonetheless, he'll be there tonight, accepting his diploma, and he hopes to go on to junior college to excel in his welding courses. So, we congratulate Ulysses Alvarado. Congratulations.
Do be sure and congratulate him for much. Jody, had a comment?
I think that our council member made a very important point, that we do have students that go on to college to higher levels of education. We also have students who go into the trades. And that's super important these days because unless we have those people coming up, we're going to have a void in our community, as across the nation. In fact, I have one child that's college-educated, and I have another one in the trades. So, I'm covering both bases.
Thank you, Jody. Any other comments? If not, we're going to move on to one more very nice event, and that's our Citizens Academy graduation.
Mayor and council, last evening, we had our 10th meeting for the Citizens Academy. And this evening, we're here to hand out the certificates for those individuals that really did a great job of serving this community by dedicating their time, choosing to learn more about the community and the issues that we have in the community. And it was a lot of fun, and we had a really good class. So, with that, I will call off the names of the individuals. Just come on down, and we have your certificate. Oh, and by the way, for the first time, we've made copies of that photograph that you all grinned for last night. And actually, it came out pretty good. Anyway, Jocelyn Bouchard? Harold Bowie and Geraldine Bowie? Edward Bronner and John Conway? Janice Cotner and Jerry Cotner? Did you have fun? Was it any good? Congratulations. In 10 weeks? Well, tell these guys that. That's a good thing. Deborah Koiner, Joseph Feen, Germano, Deborah Green? Oh, goodness. David Hall and Judy Hall are not here, and I've got... Mary Ann Hall, Nance Johnson? Did you have fun? Good. Nance, there you go. Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Robert Killen, Ruth Killen? Oh, that's not good. That's definitely not good. Raymond Coleman, Richard Kutscherson? I'm not good. Yeah, that one. Come on up. And Jerry LaRoca? Raymond? David... David Lenning? Edward Lyra? Perry Luswick and Robert Olive? Ron Purcell, Joan Sinclair? Howard Sobelmann and Kathy Sobelmann? Michael Stevens? Come on down. Gabriella Watts? Yes, you may. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Yeah. And Debbie Winter? And that concludes our certificate handing out. We have some cookies, and if the mayor so elects, we'll take a short recess and grab some cookies. No dinner tonight, gang. Aw! But the cookies are good. Ryan made them before he left. And again, thank you for all of your time. We really appreciate it.
Okay, we will take a short recess and enjoy cookies. Larry worked all day to bake them. So, let's go and enjoy. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Okay, we're going to reconvene. Number seven. Comments, communications?
Oh, Chamber Commerce.
Mary?
Chamber Commerce.
Oh.
Chamber Commerce. Oh, I'm sorry, Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, we have that yet, too. Where's Marnie? I'm sorry, I jumped ahead one. You're up, Marnie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And right now, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our newest team member at the Chamber of Commerce, our member services manager, Brady Cabral. And he will be doing a lot of the business intros when I'm not here, but we're very fortunate to have him on board. He brings a lot of personality, a lot of... He brings a lot of personality, a lot of enthusiasm, great tech, great tech expertise, too. Yeah, helps us there at the office. So please join me in welcoming Brady to our family.
Hey, everybody, I'm Brady. As she said, I'm the new Membership Sky at the Chamber, the Membership Services Manager. I'm really excited to be a part of the Chamber, and even more excited to be in front of you guys today. Without further ado, today I'm doing some introductions. We have a lot of new businesses coming to Prescott Valley, and I'm introducing a couple today that are members of the Chamber. We have Robert Morris with Spirit and Body Massage. We're going to have him come up and talk a little bit to you guys. So welcome, Robert.
Greetings, Robert.
Hi, there. Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to be here. And Brady does have a lot of personality. Actually, I think I was the very first one that you signed up at the Chamber. I think so. Anyway, again, my name is Robert Morris. I'm with Spirit and Body Massage. I just opened my doors in January of this year. My passion is to help people and not break their bank account at the same time. We, I have such a passion of, in today's society, we've gotten so far away from touch, shove away, shove away, shove away. And there's such a healing aspect of touch, whether it's healing the body, the spirit, physical ailments or whatever. And that's what I want to do. I want to be able to help people. Whether, if it's just holding that person's hand, I've had one client that just wanted me to hold her hand for 45 minutes of the massage. That's what she needed at that moment in time. Had a client today that is experiencing terrible pain. She had a bunch of surgeries, fused in the back. But be able to provide her relief, that's what I do, and that's what I'm passionate about. But I'm just so happy to be a massage therapist that can help people. So anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself, and I thank you so much for this opportunity.
How do they get ahold of you, Robert?
Actually, Brady has some, he's slacking. My telephone number is 928-533-9247. You can also go on the web. It is www.massageprescottvalley.com. And I would love to be able to help as many people as I can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robert, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and we have another guest joining us. It's not necessarily a business as much as a church. We have Liz Kennedy joining us from St. Luke's Episcopal Church. Let's welcome Liz.
We're not actually a new business or church. We've been here since 1892 in Prescott. We were first located on 114 South Marina Street, and we've now moved to our new location on Shepherd's Lane out by the airport in 2000. St. Luke's is a vibrant community where traditional worship and contemporary ideas are held, and we welcome all Quad City residents. And I'll just let you know a couple events we're having. On June 3rd, we're having our, Dennis Hauser is our Choir Master and Music Director at St. Luke's. He's been guest singer at the Hallwood Bowl, and he's quite renowned in the West. And we're having our first annual free concert fundraiser at the church. It's June 3rd from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's free to the public. However, if you'd like to give a little donation, it'd be very welcomed. We also have our Vacation Bible School, which is free to all the citizens of the Quad Cities, and that is June 5th through the 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00 every day. And then our other event, but this is for our youth ministry, which is quite growing and which is wonderful, to see young people get involved in church. They're going on their second mission trip. It's going to Santa Fe, New Mexico, this year, from June 17th to 25th. And then I'll just tell you all of our outreach really quickly. As all you know, we have our Don't Spend Christmas Alone, and we just celebrated our 37th year, where we served 400 parishioners in the community in the church and 300 meals outbound. We had the help of all the police departments and the fire departments in the area. We're also big in the Habitat Humanity, the Prescott Community Covered Food Bank, the Prescott Valley Food Bank, the Chino Valley Food Bank, Coyote's Garage, Prescott Area Shelter Services, Warm for Winter, Project Aware, which our church founded, Undy Sunday, which we do in November 11th, is for the veterans. We take all the undies and socks and things over to the hospital. People Who Care, which our church also founded, do a blood drive, West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, Angel Tree, Operation Fair Start, we're a sponsor of the PV Little League, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Highway Cleanup, and Paper Collection, which for the Lions Club. That's it.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out.
All right, well, thank you for helping me welcome these businesses.
Brady, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go on to comments and communications. Mary, you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Memorial Field Display of the Flags is over at Bob Edwards Park this year. So we do appreciate the town of Prescott Valley for helping the veterans with the lighting and the location and all that they do. It was put up a few days ago. The memorial ceremony will be on Memorial Evening at 6:00 p.m. at Bob Edwards Park. Okay? And then they'll be taking down the flags, and if you feel that you could offer some time to help the veterans gather up the flags and put them away, they would appreciate that. So thank you very much, and hope to see all of you there.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments with Laura?
I'd just like to thank all the staff and council people who worked our Prescott Valley Town Table at the Garden Show. I made a guesstimate that we spoke to thousands of people. I don't know what it was like for each one of you on your shift, but on Friday and Saturday, we had three and four people deep. And at one point, Richard Parker and Larry and I were all there at the table on Friday, and we still had people waiting to talk to us. And I think that's amazing, that people stopped, they asked really good questions, and I'm proud of our town, and I'm proud of our staff and our council members for being there and participating.
Was that because Richard wouldn't shut up, and that's why they were lined up?
It looked a lot like you.
I just want to, I just want to repeat basically what Laura Lee said. I got to do the shift on Sunday from 11:00 to 3:00, and it was so good to see so many people stop by and give us the compliments, good, bad, or indifferent, it didn't matter. If they had something that had to be taken care of, we just gave them Larry's card and said, here, he'll take care of it for you. But we also took notes, and we did some follow-up, and we will do follow-up to the people that wrote. So it was a very fun experience, it was a very good experience, and it was great to see so many people. And I heard from a lot of the other vendors who had been there for, you know, a few years, that Sunday afternoons, actually Sundays, it's usually, they could count on one hand how many people stopped by, but there was a constant flow of people. And when the Home and Garden Show had to close at 3:00, they literally had to turn the lights out to give people the hint, it's time to leave. It was that crowded and that busy. So it was very good. And one last thing that I have to mention, which is totally separate from the Home and Garden Show, is save the date, August 19th, we're having a fundraiser called Hope Still Floats. This is the second or third year, I think the third year we're doing this. It's a fundraiser for the Yavapai Family Adifficacy Center, and YFAK is the only place in Yavapai County that is able to do the intake on sex abuse and rape cases. They have specially trained people, and they have the facilities in order to do it, where they could do the, basically, the input for the police to do it. Not even the emergency rooms or the hospitals have the authorization to do the intake on a sexual abuse case like they do. And it's a very worthwhile charity, and I'll be coming back with more details later. But right now, save the date, August 19th, it's going to take place at Stone Ridge. Thank you.
Any other comments? If there be no more comments, we'll move on into the items under the Consent Agenda. These are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired on an item, it will be removed from the Consent Agenda to be considered separately. This includes the approval of the May 3rd and 4th work-study sessions and May 11th council meeting, approving the acquisition of a controlled liquor license for Puerto Vallarta, located at 11901 East Highway 69. Juan M. Perez Sanchez applicant. Approving a special event liquor license for Cellar 433 to sell alcoholic beverages at Orchard Ranch Harvey Resort during a jazz festival to be held on Sunday, June 30th. John and Brigad McLaughlin applicant. Approving an intergovernmental agreement with, between Prescott Valley Police Department and the Arizona Department of Public Safety, Gang, and Immigration Intelligence, Team Enforcement Mission, State Gang Task Force, and approving Resolution Number 1997 to abandon no longer needed public utility easement along the eastern boundary of parcel number 10301 626. Lots 796 at 8225 North Whistling Acres Way in Pronghorn Ranch. Approving the purchase of a sewer easement along a property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Lake Shore Drive and Navajo Drive for $1,184, Mountain Rose Hung Investments. GAs department reports, account payable, monthly financial report, council investment report, quarterly tax report, and approving the May 25th, 2017 Board Selection Committee Minutes. Anyone want to pull on item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor. June, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote? It's yes.
Yes, okay. And, Mar, Rooney?
Mine is a yes also.
Okay, thank you. And that passes, Mayor.
Thank you, June. Okay, we move on to new business. Consideration of approving Resolution Number 1994, adopting the tentative budget for the town of Prescott Valley for fiscal year 2017 and 18, and giving notice of a public hearing on June 22nd, 2017. Mr. Cope.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members.
Mayor and council, as you are well aware, we started this process back in November, and you are a mere five weeks away from the conclusion of our budget process. And you are to be applauded for that because there are many, if not most governmental entities that are nowhere near as far along as you are. If you elect this evening to adopt the tentative budget, then we will end up having a couple more steps, and you have about three and a half months of respite and rest, and then we start the process again. Would certainly like to thank all of those that have been involved in this process, and that includes a significant number of our citizens that have chosen to take the time to come out to open meetings, public meetings at their HOA buildings or whatever, or have taken the time to share their opinions with you. You have done an outstanding job of compiling all of the desires and wishes of the citizenry, and we have taken that information from you and built a budget on that. So having said that, Bill, let's get down to the nitty-gritty.
Thank you. Mayor, just a couple of comments. Tonight, again, we're going to be approving a tentative budget for fiscal year 1718, and also, we're going to be approving the date for the next public hearing, which will be June 22nd. In your RFC, you'll see Exhibit B, which indicates the days that the notice will be published in a courier. So it's something we have to follow statually, so that will be accomplished then. Then, just as a reminder, once the tentative budget is approved tonight, hopefully it will be approved tonight, at that point, when we go to the public hearing, the budget can only be lowered, it cannot be increased at the public hearing. So, and then also on May 3rd and 4th, you heard from staff talk about their very perspective of their budgets and giving your feedback and getting some input. As a result of those two evenings, there were no changes to the town budget, so it was still, it stays the same as it was. So with that, for the fiscal year 2017-18, tentative budget is $93,965,872. Copies of the budget books are available up in Larry's office, in the library, and on our website. So if you want to see our current budget, tentative budget is on our website. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone? Mary?
I just have a thank you to you, because you do, you've really gone out of your way, an extra way to make sure that the budget was very easy to be able to look at, understand it a little better, and just a lot, a lot of effort for the community at large, and I appreciate that, because it helps a lot of us. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I mean, most of it, I have to give a lot of it to my staff. I mean, they just did a great job this year. Lee, Irina, Katie, Lisa, they all did a very, a great job, and they, I asked for some input on some changes, and they came up with some great changes, so, and we incorporate them into this year's budget, so. They really deserve all the credit. I had to stand up here and kind of just talk about it, but they did all the work.
Then you're in charge.
I will do that. I'll let them know.
To take back the thank you.
I will.
Any other comments? Laura?
I wanted to comment on our change this year of going out into the communities. I think that's one of the better decisions regarding budgets that we've ever made. We always like more people to participate, but this year, we did get more people to participate by going out into the various communities. And having been on the council for a long time, a lot of people kind of said to me, wow, that's an awfully big budget, but we're still way below what our budgets were, we'll call it our heyday in America. So this is a budget that works, it's a budget that makes sense, and the citizens that took the time to address it and have commented to me have been well pleased.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest if you do have an interest, don't wait until elections, per se. You'll have an opportunity on June 22nd to come out and comment, and obviously, we're hoping that you can look at the summary information. It's a lot of information, I think, to digest, but I think you can get a gist in terms of what our budget is and where the revenue and expenses are going, and what we're supporting this year in terms of projects. So, you know, if there's anything you need, I think June 22nd will be the time that you can actually make your presence and ideas known, or at least concerns, or we're even looking for compliments, so whatever is in your mind.
Well, and also, even if not, we're always available to answer questions from the citizens regarding the budget. If they have, if they don't want to show up on 22nd, they can always contact me. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any other comments?
Want a motion?
I think so, if you're ready.
All right, I'll make the motion to authorize, Mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number 1997. Valley for fiscal year 2017-18 and giving notice of a public hearing on June 22, 2017 by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
June, we got the motion and a second. Would you set the vote?
Yes. Thank you.
Richard, you want any?
That is, yes unanimously.
That passes, Mayor.
Okay, we move on to Number B. Consideration of approving Resolution Number 1998 adopting and approving a final development plot plan, FDP 17-002 for Granville Unit B. Richard, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. True story, when Laura Lee and I were out passing out hats, anytime anybody had a complaint, I'd hand them one of Larry's cards and say, you should call that guy. And so, I concur. I think we had a real good opportunity to engage people at the home show.
Richard, you might want to be a little careful about that. I know you told them to call in between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m.
Yeah, right. And I gave him his cell phone number as well, so, but we enjoyed that, and I enjoyed that as well. And also, Woody Lewis with my group was there, and I think he was there with Rick through the evening or the afternoon, but it was a really good opportunity and one I'm grateful for. To the item on your agenda, Granville continues to grow. You're seeing the area, the northerlymost portion of Granville developing, and that's because of the proximity to the main sewer lines there. And the area you see in black as well as in red has all been graded to the final blue-top lot configuration. These areas that are identified in red would be the next phase that they're proposing to move forward, and actually, Joe Contadino with Universal Homes, who's doing the development, has been installing infrastructure there, water and sewer and so forth, and roads. He comes now to the council requesting the final development plan slash plat approval so that he can get through the Department of Real Estate, but most of the public improvements are in for the lots that are illustrated in red comprising 122 lots on 28 acres for the next phase of Granville. And you'll be seeing this reoccurring probably every two and a half, three months so that he gets ahead of and stays ahead of the market, which has been tremendous. This plat exceeds the town standards, and I would respond to any questions that you may have, and I certainly would recommend approval.
Questions, anyone? Mary?
No, I was just kind of looking here, and, you know, a lot of people will say, wow, they're just putting up all these homes, and, you know, this was a vision back in, it looks like 1998, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
So, you make plans many years ago, and then you see them come forward later on, so I think it's, it's really, you've done a fine job. It's really looking nice out there, and it's a lot of work.
And the developer's really been cooperative in looking out for the town's interests, as you know, in post-declaration water, post the groundwater mining declaration. The water that was allocated for this project is very important to accrue back to the town. And the developer has done redesigns of his project to eliminate the golf course, and by doing so, he will achieve the total density and the total number of units that were originally approved in 1998, and he should be applauded for doing so.
Thank you, Richard.
Any other comments, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, just to reinforce what Councilman Mallory was saying, is that I think all of our master plan communities were initially reviewed and approved back in the late 90s, 2000s. So, I think what we're seeing now is just a plan growth based on our 2025 plan. And, you know, I agree, I think we always have questions that the people perceive this as new building, and it is new building, but it came about back in 1998, 99, 2000, so.
Laura?
In line of that, I'd like to comment that the two days that I worked at the Home Garden Show, it was interesting. I expected a lot of complaints, and I didn't get a lot of complaints. I did get a lot of questions about water, and it was a perfect example to do just what we were just talking about. This was all planned for, it was organized, and it was carefully, carefully managed so that people would not have to be concerned about water. Newcomers coming here don't understand our history of very complex, well-thought-out planning efforts, and I got the benefit of that answering questions because I could turn them to our general plan. And it was, it was an interesting experience, and we are bearing the fruit of all of that.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Richard, if I was at home watching, which I have multiple times, I'd have the questions like, when are these lots going to be ready that I can purchase?
It'll take him about 45 days to get through the Department of Real Estate, but you can go out and purchase the lot right now, take a reservation. But you should be aware that the market is so hot right now, has been for the last several months, that you'll be in a waiting line of 125 persons.
Thank you.
So, in that case, it'll be a year before you'll get your house.
Rick?
Be patient.
Any other comments?
Just remember, if you have a complaint, call Larry Turkowsky, and his cell phone number is?
Between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., right? And be sure and let it ring first. Okay, no other comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody care to make a motion? Emotion, commotion?
I'll make a motion. I'll motion to approve Resolution Number 1998 adopting and approving a final development plan plat, FDP 17-002 for Granville Unit 10B by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Good, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, June? And that passes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, June. Okay, we move on to Number C. Consideration of awarding a construction contract for fiscal year 2017-2018 Annual Chip Seal Program to Earth Resources Corporation in a total amount, total bid amount up to $1,283,988.85.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. The argument you do have before you tonight is award of our annual chip seal program. I think council is used to every year we come to you about this time to award a very big chip seal program. Think what's important to mention to council was, you know, this is our summer 17 maintenance program. Chip seal is part of what we do. Council may recall back on April 6th, had a quite a long presentation about all the different maintenance treatments we do. We had crack seal, you know, spot patching, and of course, chip seal is that final layer of all the hard work not only the town streets crew has done, but also in partnership with our contracting community, we spent a neighborhood up to $600,000 preparing these streets on the summer chip seal program for this final chip seal application. So, do always want to mention our partnerships with our local contracting community and how our streets department works very well with them to get that quality workmanship to prepare these streets. I think council is aware, in some of the core of the town streets, we've widened these streets back to their historic widths. In addition, some spot patching, you do get failures over time, and we are picking up that particular frequency of chip seal. Council may recall, when you put the half-cent sales tax into place, that, this is a five-year program, so we just finished year one, we'll begin year two and start this pavement rehab. And we anticipate being, at this pace of $2 million a year, we'll be up to a five-year chip seal cycle within five years. So, we are beginning year two, and as I mentioned, lots of good cooperation with our local contracting community. Do want to always take the opportunity to thank council for the opportunity of how we bid this particular project. You saw the tentative budget was just approved in Item A, and this is our effort to say, well, let's get going, guys. We want to get started July 1st. So, this, I do want to point out, this particular war tonight would not become effective until the new budget year starting July 1st if the budget process goes through. But what I do is it gives us a jumpstart. I've heard feedback from the contract community, you're the only people that do it this way, and you get great bids because no one's able to work when you don't have a budget in place. So, we get very, very good prices and very good competition. I think, as council can see, we had six bidders here, very good competition. Once again, Earth Resources and Asphalt Pavement Supplier, local contractors that help us with some of the asphalt patching, competed heavily for this chip seal opportunity. So, great competition, prices are in line with what we expected from last year, so cost of oil has stayed constant, so we really right where the scope of the project was on this particular scope. Council may recall the summer 17 maintenance program, we had about $1.4 million. We're right where we need to be. In addition, we'll start our maintenance treatments this summer too. So, all part of a methodical process to take care of the streets, done last, and keep moving forward and catching our streets up on enhanced maintenance. So, with that, great competition, Earth Resources Corporation, who has done it for the last couple of years for us, will, with council approval, would get started at the new budget year starting July 1st. We anticipate about six weeks of construction time to finish the complete work. Once again, we'll hand out flyers to the residents. It's all available on the website. We get notices out to the people a day or two in advance, so got a lot of great confidence in Earth Resources, the local aggregate suppliers, the oil suppliers. They'll get started, making sure we're queued up, so when we start July 1st, all that aggregate's in place, even the oil's on its way and being reserved. So, great prices, I've mentioned, and really looking forward to this year's project, and of course, be my recommendation, award to Earth Resources for $1,283,398 for this year's chip seal maintenance program. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions, anyone?
No.
I think you explained it good, no?
Very good, Mayor.
Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, Jody?
All right. Motion to award the construction contract for the fiscal year 2017-2018 Annual Chip Seal Program to Earth Resources Corporation in the total bid amount of up to $1,288,398.85.
And I'll second.
Okay. Junior, set the vote again.
There we go. And that passes.
Thank you, June.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can go to work on that one.
We'll get started once the new budget year starts. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Okay, next one is Item D. Consideration of approving professional service agreement for construction services with Trinity ERD for the joint facility roof remediation project. Bill and Steve, who's first?
Mayor, I'm going to suggest that we flip Items D and E, and we allow Bill to go first and explain the contract itself, and then I'll explain them.
Bill, you're up.
I'm up. All right.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. I have been working-
Can I talk a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, okay. We've been working diligently to bring about a project here that will replace the existing roof here on the library. It, we put it out to bid a little bit earlier, and that bid didn't get any bidders, which was actually a good thing for us because we rethought the program and the project, and we're starting out this portion of the project by putting a membrane on the library portion of the roof. It's the library and the actual college portion of the roof. This membrane is a 20-year membrane, and we've had it colored so that it will kind of simulate the existing metal roof that is on there right now. Well, in fact, we have a display up there that shows you the rusted metal that is on the roof at the moment and the membrane that we are anticipating to put on, and we'd like to put on. We've had this project, and we've put it out to bid, and we had a winning bidder by G-Con was the contractor's name, and we'd like to be able to authorize a contract with them so that they could get started. We can get this roof put on and in place before the monsoon season set in. That will give us a real life test of, do we have a dry building or not? And then, after we get through the monsoons, we are still working on the final product on what will be on the roof. But in the display, you can see that we have these ribbons that kind of emulate what's on the roof now with the cortan metal, and right now, that's a part of the project that would be done after. But during the time that we're living with it, we're going to continue to look at and make sure that this is the best application we can do and the best look for the building. So, that's the project that we're looking to do, and we're looking for authorization. And any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions, anyone? Steve, do you have anything? Larry?
Yeah. Bill, could you go ahead and share with council that you're working right now to have exactly that look all the way around on the edges of the building, so then it'll end up matching your siding as well?
Exactly. Well, one of the things we're working on to try and formulate a plan, to take some of the material that we're taking off the roof and around the perimeter of the building, we would add that look with the overhang of the metal and about 18 inches of metal around there so that from the ground, looking at the building, it will look the same as it does now. But once you're beyond that metal, you'll have that membrane roof that is a good 20-year membrane roof that will last and keep us waterproof.
Other questions, Laura?
So, if I understood and what I just heard, I'm delighted because we're keeping the integrity of the design without the problems of the design.
That's our intent, is to do just that.
All right, thank you.
Good. Other questions? Mary?
I just, I just want to know, let you know that I absolutely agree with you in regards to with the weather and the monsoons, and that that part is very important, so be good to see this thing move forward and quickly.
Yes.
I'm just kind of curious, Bill, what the difference is in that roof to keep it from doing the same thing that is existing one did.
Well, we do have an existing membrane that's under the metal panels right now, but unfortunately, with the expansion and contraction of the metals, that membrane has been compromised. So, we're going to take that off, and it's, I believe, a white or a gray membrane that's under there now. So, by taking that off and not making a lot of penetrations through it, it's a good solid membrane that doesn't have to, we don't have to doctor it up because we have pipes and nails and screws running through it. So, this will give us a good solid, it expands with the building, it has the flexibility. So, I think overall, you get something that is made for being on a roof of this slope and everything, and it really works better than trying to put something else on top of that.
Tried, tested, and proven, I hope?
Yes, it has been. It's been in the industry for over 30 years, probably more like 50.
Okay. Other questions, anyone? Larry?
Bill, is the contractor here or contractor's representative here?
Do we? Oh, could you come down? Well, can introduce you to the contractor then? Bob? Okay. Bob Smith with G-Con, who is the contractor that had the low bid on this.
Mr. Smith, welcome. Good to see you.
Glad to be here. Thank you very much for considering our proposal. We've been collectively in public works construction. My whole career, 41 years, has been public works construction. There's a lot of schools around here that I've built. But anyway, saying that, when I heard about the project, it was one of the ones that was passing us by, so I made a trip up here, and I listened at the pre-bid meeting. And very, everybody in the industry knows what you've endured here, so, and we just felt like it was important that we support you. And so, we worked as best we could with the knowledge that we had of it, and we knew that we were going to propose if we could assure you that we can do it within the 30-day period of time on the primary roof, which is so critical. And I lived up here five years, so I know how good a month June can be, and we've got contingencies. So, I think, and we've talked about this alternative, you know, we've been passing ideas from our viewpoint of work that we've done. We thought it was a good idea to, if we were going to use the pro-fide metal around the perimeter, not to buy new stuff, we were going to recycle it. It was part of our proposal, but now we can, we can turn some of that material back. We can pull out the stuff that is the best, and then we just need to create the details that elevates that up off of the roof so it's independent, so that it can come off if necessary, but it has nothing to do, no attachments whatsoever to the primary roof, which is the membrane there. So, we've been in constant discussions about that. So, we're primed, ready, we understand this thing's supposed to start immediately. which is the, the membrane there. So, we've been in constant discussions about that. So, we're primed, ready. We understand this thing's supposed to start immediately. We're ready for that. Facilities people have issued appeals so that the manufacturer could ensure delivery, and so we're expecting that. And it's going to take us about seven days to grind out our final schedule, talk about how much roof to pull up. We have some inspection to do on the structural deck, and then be able to move on, so. So, we're ready to do that. We're going to bring our expertise. We're happy to be of service, and we're really excited about the project.
Good, thank you. Yeah, Laura?
I want to be very open with you. I have a great deal of anxiety about this, to the point I don't even know how to put my questions together. You mentioned the product had a lot, very long lifespan. Frankly, we heard that before. That's what we heard about this building, and it's hard to trust. It's really, really hard for me to trust that. One question that occurs to me, as you know, this is a very unique building, and, and the design contributes to the problems. How can you overcome those problems? What is your plan to succeed with the uniqueness of the building?
Well, I think that, that really, the primary part of that solution was in selecting the proper method and not mixing the two products. I'm not fully primed on exactly what has happened. Listening today, it doesn't surprise me that a profiled metal roof across such a large expanse, and I don't want to get into critique of the design. I'm not a roof expert. I'm a builder. But I could tell you that, that large expanse, which is attractive, I think that creates a slight concrete when you pour it in large slabs. The action of the contraction and, or contraction-expansion works a lot of pressure on what's going around it. That's why you see, that's why we cut concrete into strips and, and isolate them, things of that nature. Same thing happens on the roof. And so, it doesn't surprise me to hear that the underlying membrane, which you would expect to be the, the last, you know, sort of ray of hope on, on any leaks, would begin to tear and pull. So, again, not being privy, we'll know more as soon as we start tearing it off. But, but to try to replicate that roof would be a partial mistake without, I, you know, again, this is just a personal opinion, I would have probably expected to see more expansion joints. Little breaks where the structure's allowed to move separately. And it's, and so, these kinds of projects that I've been involved in, very ornate, then usually that's something that everybody wants to avoid because it interrupts the appearance of it. But, you know, again, I'm, I, I don't want to go against anything that, I'm sure you've had a lot of experts, you know, examine this and report on it, and they probably led you to this decision. I could tell you from the, the discussions we've had with the professional roofing subcontractors that participated in this, and then, you know, they said this was the right solution. In essence, you're going to have an expandable, contractable material across the roof that won't be affected by heat and cold and, and season changes, the same way your existing roof is doing. So, it is something we see constantly in this kind of environment. You have a lot more, you have a hundred-degree days and you have five-degree days. And so, so I'm, so this is the type of material you would use. You would see it in the Midwest a lot, as my experience shows, just because of those extremes.
Okay, I'm going to paraphrase what I heard, so that I'm sure I know what I heard.
As long as you start off with the part that I said I'm not an expert.
I respect that, and I'm comforted by that, actually, because we had experts before, and that brought us to where we are. So, I'm not excited about anybody that's an expert anymore. I believe that you have built into your plan flexibility that you may have to change, make numerous changes, and I'm comforted by that. I don't want anyone coming in here and selling us a bill of goods again. I took it very personally. I still take it very personally. And I watched what happened up in the children's library, and I don't want them to ever go through that again, so I'm here representing all of that. I want to trust you, and you did gain my confidence by not being an expert. As you go along, please double-check, be flexible, and don't hesitate to think, I may not have this right. Let's take a step back and figure a better way to do this. That's the most important thing I can think of to ask you for me to sleep better at night.
I think that's what we're applying for the second phase particularly. The first phase is time is of the essence. It's going to take all of June for us to get it in and test it. There is a provision in, in this, in our bid to test it completely when it's done. So, I think that part of it, by the end of June, we should be able to say, the tests have passed, and when that first storm comes, you'll know, right? And so, in the meantime, I think the second phase, which we have allowed time for, was for us to, originally was to be the strips. And, and I think Prudence says that there's probably something better, less costlier. As the discussion this week happened, and, and I talked to the architect, it was like, what do you think of this idea? And I said, well, frankly, I think it's a much better idea if, in fact, the impact on the community, the importance, the signature of the building is what they see. If you fly over, you're not going to see it. It looks like a little rusted orange spot on the ground, right? So, unless you have a, a spot where you can see everything, which you don't, it's really what's happening around here. We could do that and maintain this integrity of it, which is, you want twenty years, no more leaks, right? So, that's what this system is supposed to do for you.
Well, thank you for your integrity, and thank you for taking it on because it's way more than a construction job. It's an emotional job. It's, we cannot have our rooms having water entering everywhere. You know, that's a given. But thank you for not being scared off.
Any other question? Mike?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. It, it sounds like you're going to go through a couple of, I don't want to use phases because that's what you're using might be confusing, but it sounds like the first approach is a demolition. Would you call it that? And then the other is applying the membrane.
That, that's actually one contiguous phase. So, we're going to work out where, we're not going to take everything off the roof and, and leave it, you know, vulnerable. So, we're, we're going to sit down and work out our schedule. We'll bring the facilities people and us, talk through that. And it, now, now we're getting into the nuts and bolts. It's like a push, we call it a push-pull schedule, and it's be, how much can we tear off? What is the timing of that, and how fast can we get a return? Because we're not just taking like one layer off and putting something else. We're taking it all down, and we're putting all new back up. We've got treatments on the edges, so we have to strategize where's the most vulnerable, where, where we can gain the most gain, you know, in terms of, of the work. So, I think the only thing we need to be aware of is what none of us know, and that is what's under it.
Right.
So, what I know of the building, the material, the decking is galvanized. And so, there's a high probability that that's not compromised. So, we've, again, we've talked with the design people about, when we kick off, we'll probably establish some protocols. Like, what if we find this? Well, we, we just patch the deck, you know, if necessary. And so, there's things of that nature. If we find a whole sheet, what is our protocol? So, we'll have to, we'll have to address it when we see it. But I think that we've got the right people that will be there as we expose that, and then we work out the methodologies, then it'll be able to, you know, there'll, there'll be a day or two where we'll have to all scratch our head and say, what do we do with that? So, the key of that, I think, is that once we start rolling, we have to be prepared to, like, any emerg, we're considering this in emergency repair, which we do a lot of, and that we have to just keep rolling through to, and then we'll have a protocol to cover it up, albeit temporarily. If we're right in the middle of it, you have some unique rainstorm for a couple, three days. So, we have to cover it, protect it, and then be able to move on just as soon as possible, so.
And the technology is not new, right? I think I've seen this more so probably in the southern Arizona than up here, and it's been used for years. And kind of leads me into the next question. If there is a possibility of compromise in the future, is it easy to remedy?
Very easy, yeah, which is why it's so popular.
Right.
I mean, the training for even your facilities people, if somebody were up there working and damaged it, there's, the training on that is, to simplify it, it's like an inner tube patch. You just, literally, you just heat it up, you take the same color material, and it bonds. You can't break the bond. It's not like a caulking joint or something. The, the part of me, the whole thing is bonded. So, that would be if you had hail damage and things of that, that happen, to have excessive damage. It's very resilient to that. Again, that's, I think, another reason why this was proposed and selected as a material. So, it's very appropriate. So, and the key to this roof, don't put anything on it.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, that's the key to any roof. And anytime you can build a building and put a roof up and put nothing on the roof, that's a, that's a, that's a roof that will last fifty years, unless it deteriorates.
Steve?
It might, if you might want to just take a moment and give the Council some confidence in that the product that you're going to put underneath the Fiber Tech is not going to be the same gypsum board that's up there now.
No, the whole system is really a complete system. I think we're having some iso insulation. I don't want, I don't have it all in my head, but, but yeah, everything I, go ahead. Yes, yeah. It is, it is not gypsum board. So, if you've ever seen wet drywall, you know what that looks like, so.
We've seen it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think you have, so.
Mary?
No, sir.
Any questions about G-Con itself that I can answer?
I think you've answered it. We want to be sure that the expansion and contraction is not going to be a problem. We want it, we want that roof to hold water one hundred percent.
On the outside, on the outside.
Keep the water outside, bye. We sure appreciate your comment.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments, and thank you for coming up. Bill, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments, or motions, demotions?
Okay, which one are we making a motion on?
D.
D.
Number D.
D?
No, you're on E.
You're on E. You're on E, the award of the roofing contract itself to G-Con.
All right, I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the budget transfer and award of a construction contract.
I think you're one, I had, or number E there.
Well, we jumped over it. We have to go back and do D. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
An award of a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, G-Con, in, in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for the library roof remediation project phase one, CIP F-207 RB by electronic vote.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, June, let's set the vote.
And that passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, then, now we'll go, I guess we have to go back to the other one and make a motion. Anyone care to make a motion on D?
I'll make a motion on D.
Okay.
Motion to approve a professional services agreement for construction services with Trinity ERD for the joint facility roof remediation project by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, June?
Yes, one second.
For some reason, mine isn't coming up, June. Oh, there they are.
Okay, and that passes.
Good. Bill, where are you? Gentlemen, go to work. We got it. Okay, that one passes. Now we'll go back to...
I'll stay around for questions.
Comments from the public? Consideration and general discussion, or discussion of general unscheduled. Comments from the public? I was wishing to address the Council, need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes, unless additional time is granted by the Mayor. Anyone care to make any comments? If there be no comments, then we've still got one more item that I know everybody hates, and that's number eleven. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? June, we got the motion and a second. Would you set the vote?
And that's unanimous.
And that one passes. Thank you, June. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.